Mean the order, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Turned out to be a rainy day. I didn't think it was gonna rain that long myself. But boy, wasn't yesterday nice.
Oh, boy.
Eighty-three degrees.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Very nice.
Roll call, please.
Marc Burchard?
Here.
Maureen Bory?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Here.
Crystal Regan?
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Kristi Hilton?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Bill's payable, I will entertain a motion, please.
I will make a motion, Board, that we approve the bill's payable in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Marc Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next is our supervisor's report. And let me, uh... I know you're all thrilled to hear about the supervisor's report, right, John? High water, actually, I was amazed for the month of April, we actually went down one inch. And we're still holding steady and, like I say, where I'm optimistically hopeful that we're going to, well, we're gonna have lower water. We're about fourteen, sixteen inches lower than what we were this time last year, probably more than that now, actually. So that's a good thing. Really don't have too much to report on COVID, just everyone get their vaccines. I, uh...I did reach out to see if we were able to get a vaccination date or a couple days either on Harson's Island and over here on the mainland. I'm still doing a little talks with that. I'm gonna see if there's, if there would be much of a demand. They did tell me that First Community, Community First has it, and you can get them at the Kroger here, too, so, um...maybe we can do something a couple days over on the island. And I've been doing a lot of work on the budgets, um...with a lot of short-term and long-term planning as far as, you know, township-wide on things we got going on and things we need to be done, you know, the last two years, we were so inundated with dealing with high water and COVID that some stuff got pushed down the road a little bit, and now we're bringing all that to the forefront, so we are busy. It's all good, though. Been dealing with a lot of building and blade issues, um...and we did transfer the, our planning services to a new planner, um, that's going smooth so far. Really good news, um, as Chief Rose will tell you, we had, um...we purchased some fire trucks and we had to finance about two-thirds of it, and we went out to bid for the bonds, and we've been talking about it last couple meetings, you know, they're saying, oh, we'll probably get two and a half and, or two and a quarter interest. These banks all around the country really bid on, on, on giving us the money and collecting interest. Now, mind you, Clay Township has, our D and B rating is double A-plus. It's the gold standard for any municipality this size. So it was on the open meeting, open market, went out for bid, and I'm glad to announce that we actually sold our financing for 1.81% interest, which is very good. Even our consultants were surprised, um...so, you know, you always hear snipes and stuff, oh, we're going broke and, you know, they're running us in the ground. Not true. So the experts will back us up on that. Uh, I've been doing a lot of work, uh, we have the short-term rental ordinance, uh, we're gonna set a public hearing on that today. Been dealing with the sewer interceptor issue, uh, trying to finish up our bike path project that goes through North, um, North Clay. We got a couple big project control, PCE projects going on, our Saw Grand, our Harson's Island Park Development, and our Pearl Beach fishing pier and area. Actually met with Phillip Sign, uh, are gonna probably be installing the sign in the next couple weeks, and we modified it a little bit, made it a little wider, a little higher. I didn't want people jump, you know, climbing on the, uh, standing on a five-gallon bucket and jump up on that sturgeon that's gonna be there. And we're also gonna put some clusters, some wood clusters, uh, around where the posts are. It's gonna be nice. Also helping the No Limits charter boats with their boat hoist, um, and, you know, we're dealing with, well, tonight, medical cannabis. I started negotiations with the Fire Department, MAFF, uh, labor contract, and on the water plant, I'll mention that I asked for Crystal Regan's help, he's an expert in construction, and he's got some contacts, and they came in with a favorable quote that we're gonna give to Elgnack in writing, and hopefully, um, get that under control and get that project moving. We've been looking at updating our water ordinance, uh, which we'll get real granular on pretty soon, and, um...I'm getting, uh, cost estimates for bathrooms, public bathrooms over by the Pearl Beach Fishing Pier, and putting up a fence and some other amenities in that area for the DDA to consider. St. John's Marsh Cleanup, Saturday, May eighth, we're gonna meet at the DNR, um, access site around eight AM, and, um, that's always a, a, a great project. And I'm also happy to announce that M-Terra is actually donating a truck for us that Saturday from ten to noon to go along and help pick up along the, the road.
Awesome.
And, uh, yeah. And Music in the Park, they're pretty well all set, in fact, we got a couple calendars here, we got between Elgnack and Clay, ten great concerts, and then we have four on the island, and, um, got all our sponsors in line and ready to get ready for the summer festivities, so that's all we got right now. It's not too bad. Okay. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Come up to the podium over here and state your name and address and...
Yeah.
How about it?
Sure. My name's Paul Blakey. I live over on Starville Road, eight-three-eight-nine. We have great concerns. My other neighbors over there bought a property that had a bunch of mine. It's been a nuisance to us. It just, you know, I'll just read what I have here because I'm not really good at public speaking.
Yep, no problem.
This ordeal with our neighbor has been going on for over a year and a half. It started with him clearing property, skid steers, chainsaws, excavators, and bulldozers, running late into the night, midnight, one in the morning. He confronted, confronted us about calling the police. He told my wife and I that we didn't belong here, that we weren't from this area. Things escalated from there. We purchased our land, built a home in hopes of living in the country style in Clay Township. I'm a licensed builder, and I'm a city inspector, and I have high standards when it comes to where I live and the things I do. I feel as a taxpaying citizen, and my concerns are not being addressed. He has a so-called shed. It's a two-story shed, it's got a balcony, picture windows. I mean, it was red-tagged, but it's still standing. Your ordinance states that it says one story or fifteen feet tall, and that's, uh, section three point oh-one. And then he's probably got a twenty-eight-foot boat on his property with no engines, not on a cradle, pushes it around with his bulldozer for about a year now. Talked to Shannon about that, and then he was busy when I told him about it, and I don't know if anything's ever come of it. We just spoke to Gary, the building inspector, not too long ago about, you know, the grades going on there and the ditches and stuff like that, and I know he can only do certain things, you know, some things are out of his hands, the county has to take care of certain things. And we had our property surveyed back in two thousand seventeen. He has since destroyed one of our property pens, and now he's buried another one up at the front of Starville Road. It's probably underneath five feet of dirt. What do I do about that now? We're just concerned, you know?
Right.
It's a blade issue. He's, I got a picture here of his property, and now he's pushed a broken-down, um, tree truck up onto a six-foot berm. Left it there, pulled it up with his dozer, pushed dirt behind it. I can't imagine that is something that should be sitting at out in our view. Then he's got a chipper, and he's got another, another boom truck, and he's got a camper. I mean, he's got all sorts of stuff there, and it just doesn't seem...
Right, I, I...
Like it's changing.
I sympathize with, with you, too, because I, I, I've heard bits and pieces, drove by there, I think a few of us have drove by there, and it, it is a mess.
Right.
And, uh, no, no question about it. So, um, I'll get granular and talk to Gary and Shannon about it and everything, and do they have your phone number on the building department?
I don't know. I mean, the police department does.
Okay.
We call them all the time because...
Right, and I, I, yep, and, uh...
He works all the time.
I'll, I'll, right, I, I know you're, there's complaints he was working late at night.
He just recently stopped as my wife came up and talked to Shannon. Shannon explained to her and to, I guess, the police department, sundown means like eight o'clock, eight-thirty, not ten, eleven o'clock at night.
Right.
And that's just recently that he's, maybe two weeks ago that he stopped doing...
Okay.
Nine, ten o'clock at night. And who wants to sit and listen to a bulldozer at ten o'clock at night, or even at five o'clock in the afternoon on a Sunday?
Sure.
When you want to sit on your porch?
Right.
You can't.
What was your address again?
Eight-three-eight-nine Starville. I'm right next to him.
Yeah, three-nine.
Yeah, and then Joe Kalifo's my neighbor, and then Donnell's their neighbor, they share the same concerns.
On another side note, we're gonna try to get, uh, we're gonna try to get broadband down your road.
Nice.
Good try. I've, 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 I've been in talks with Comcast and, and see what we can do.
Gotcha.
Morrow, your road and part of Swartow.
Did you wanna see anything, or you're, you're all good?
Oh, I'm, I'm good, no, I...
You've seen it?
Oh, I, I've seen it.
I'll take a look at it.
That's it, that's it, it was yesterday.
You got an extra copy of your write-up? Can I have this?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, I, I do sympathize with... Yeah, they're, they're stripping the law, I, I'm not sure what he's doing, I know, I know they're stripping it and, um, building it up. It, uh, it's really easy to see, go down Swartow, it's basically just past and right across the DNR access. Right. So...all right, any other public comments? Any other public comments? Hearing none. Consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the board meeting minutes of April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. The notice from St. Clair County Road Watch for the week of May third, communication, there was a thank you from the Elginet Clay Historical Society for their annual donation, and check reports, uh, for April twenty-twenty-one, and paid in between each meetings.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion on any of that by any of the board members?
Can you refresh my memory? What, what does the, uh, what does the pine guy do for us?
It's a special assessment on, uh, one of the canals for weed control.
That's what I thought, okay.
Okay. Nothing else? All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next we have Fire Chief Report. Hi, Chief.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to apologize to Township Board.
None needed.
The, one of the employees of West Shore Fire Apparatus let our pictures out, go out online before they should have, and I wanted to brief you folks first on the trucks after I got all the information. Well, they released the pictures, uh...
Chief, no apology needed. They, they have a business, so, you know.
So, but I'm sorry.
Thanks for trying to apologize, by the way.
They're promoting their own business.
I have pictures of them for you guys if you need to take a look at them.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
Love the front.
Yep. Yeah, they did a nice job on them.
Yeah.
Chief's report for April two thousand, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Attended one, uh, meeting for that month, and that was with the Harson's Island Association, Homeowners Association. General business was discussed, Fire Boat One is in the water and ready for service. We put that in the water. Primal Vent Company came in and did the inspection on both of the, uh, Primal Vent Systems in both stations, and those checked out with no issues, so they're in good working order. I had a, um, the security system installed in the, in Station Two, so that'll be up and running. We did have two issues, our two cameras that had issues, so I sent those back, and I'm just waiting for those to get, uh, receive those so we can reinstall those, but, uh, we'll have the security systems in both stations now, so...
What was the problem with the cameras?
They were waving, uh, kind of a wave...
Like interference?
Like, yep, and they took them back, and they're either gonna replace them or they'll, they'll fix them, so...on Friday of last week, I had a, or I should say, Thursday of last week, I had a Zoom meeting with West Shore, and we did a walk-around of the vehicles down in Ocala, Florida. I wasn't crazy about it, I wanted to see the trucks up close before they came up to Michigan, but, uh, we did do a Zoom meeting with those, and, uh, you can't really see the paint or anything like that, or, you know, open compartments and look, really look at it, uh, so, uh, but they did open the stuff up, they did show us everything on the trucks and how everything works, so, um, they said that, uh, that trucks were gonna leave either Friday night or Sunday. I found out today that one truck is here, and that's over in Grand Rapids at West Shore, and the other one should be here tomorrow night or, um, Wednesday.
When are you going over?
When they call me.
Okay.
Someone said that they saw it down in Florida on a flatbed being delivered up.
Oh, yeah?
Clay Township.
Great, that's great. I did talk with the makers of our airboat, the steering gearbox is in, uh, they are working on that, that's getting mounted, uh, we should receive that probably the second week of May, it should be completed, so then we'll have to go down and pick that up, so that's, uh, that'll be in our fleet. Brian Sears, I want to give him a special thanks for the hard work that he's done over in Station One, he's washed the walls inside the, inside the station, got all the cobwebs out of the corner, it looks really nice, uh, from the soot, from over the years of the trucks starting without the ventilation system, it kinda made it dingy, and he went in, we had a high lift jack, and he went around the whole building and inside, and he washed the walls down, it looks really nice, so, special thanks to him. And I would like to, uh, give Evan Randall, uh, congratulations, he passed his EMT course. Uh, he did do his registry, now we're just waiting for his state certification to come in.
You're right.
Awesome.
Progress, aren't you, over there?
Yep.
Are, are we planning on doing the pancake, uh...
At this...
At, at this point?
Point, we are, yes, we're planning for it.
Okay.
Yep.
Pancake frying pan?
Oh, we got it.
Got all that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Chief, I've been in the fire hall, and the walls really look good, he did a good job.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, up high, they're definitely sooty and...
Looks really good.
Lot of work.
Yep.
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, is the, perhaps I missed it, but is the septic field project, is that done?
That's completed.
That is.
All is up and running.
Awesome.
And we just grass seeded the, leveled it up, put grass seed down, so...
That's great.
Yep.
That's another box checked.
Yep.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Good. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hand those pictures out, uh, let them see. All right, next on the agenda, we have under unfinished business, our Piperzak, uh, settlement, and boy, I've been doing a lot of emailing back and forth the last, um, couple weeks, and, um...we, uh, basically cut, came up with a tentative settlement for the board to consider. The, the surety will continue to remain liable for any obligations under the performance bond and the payment bond, uh, with Piperzak. And, uh, just in a nutshell, you know, they, this company, Pi, uh, TR Piperzak, they did our, uh, water line extension down the Colony Road, and it, uh, the, the work was, was relatively pretty good, except for the restoration did have a lot of issues, uh, going on, but there was, um, a discrepancy on, on payment, uh, mainly due to utility conflicts that were incurred, and, uh, basically in a nutshell, they thought we owed them five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and, uh, we basically told them to pound sand, and it, it wasn't that much, and we went to mediation, and the mediator, um, you know, coming in the middle, basically, we have a, a agreement for mediation for two hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. It was finally this weekend, I was at a, a little soiree, and there was a, some attorneys standing around, and one of them was a mediation attorney. I said, is it true, under any mediation, both sides end up mad for a successful mediation? And they said, yeah, pretty much, so, um, but that's, uh, that's what we have, and, um, so, uh, I guess I'm gonna leave it up for the board, what's, uh, um, the will of the board to do, go, to, going forward.
So can I preface, um, my opinion by asking a question? Larry Dudak was going to get ahold of their attorney and ask him, does the preliminary language, you know, is it gonna be accepted if it's...
Yes, this is accepted.
You got a response?
Yes, today.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's encouraging.
Yep. And, and they all, all, all the contractors signed the waivers.
Only one of them signed?
Yep.
Do we have copies of the, the acceptance available?
Other than what Dudak said? No. Not, not this, he, he's drafted, he just drafted it.
Okay.
So...
They're good with that, I'm assuming they're going to make those available before we send payment.
Yes.
We just have to accept, they're accepting...
Right.
The offer. We have to accept the offer.
Yep.
Then they send us paperwork, we send them...
Yep.
Their settlement.
And then when, uh, our, my, our suit signs off or gives you okay, then we, they, they owe, the, that was the big thing, okay, we, we figured out what the amount is, but I thought, you know, they owe us a lot of paperwork. As soon as we cut the check, we're not gonna see these guys anymore. You know, we have maintenance bonds, performance bonds that we need, uh, and everything else before we cut the check, and that was what we've been doing the past three weeks. So, yeah, they're, they're not gonna get the money, they're not gonna get the money until they provide us with that.
Closing documentation?
Yep, closing documentation.
But of course, the lawyers make the money, so...
Well, that's the thing, I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're paying probably eighty, ninety thousand dollars more than I thought, and we thought we should, but to defend it, it will cost us a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to, you know?
Right.
And...
That might be conservative.
Yeah.
Yes, and that would be conservative, and it's like, you know, at first you get emotional, you know, oh, you know, then you settle down, you know, our, our responsibility is for the taxpayers, and, and, uh, yeah, do I like it? No, but, um...you know, it is what it is.
So the motion should be that we move forward with the, uh...
Accept the, the proposed settlement agreement.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward and accept the proposed settlement.
I'll support that.
Okay.
Can you just state the amount, just for record? Which is, which is what?
Two fifty-nine, nine hundred and twenty-five.
Two hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars out of the line item? Or not?
No.
TBD.
Right.
Joanne, you got that support?
Yes, I support that.
Yep. Okay, motion and support, any more discussion?
Probably should've listened to Cindy on this one.
Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Marc Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Close that one out. All right, under new business, we, uh, have to set a couple of public hearings, uh, set a pu, uh, entertain a motion to set a public hearing for soil removal permits for May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll support that, Maureen Bory.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll support.
Okay, motion and support.
Okay.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, set a public hearing, short-term rental ordinance, May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to establish a public hearing for the short-term rental ordinance, May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two-one-oh-seven to set our meeting dates for the next year, starting, what, in July and going all the way to end of June.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one-oh-seven, setting the township meeting dates for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year, however, I would like to amend the meeting times to begin at six PM instead of seven PM.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
I'll support that.
Okay, so we have a motion and support. Discussions, everybody good with six PM opposed to seven PM?
Is that gonna give enough time for the public to, uh, arrive here at six? I'm, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong.
Right.
Somebody coming up? Somebody coming out of town, and sometimes they don't get up till four o'clock, and.
I understand.
They should be here at six.
Um.
Just wanted to bring that up.
I mean.
It's on TV, on the next door, and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'd like to. I mean, we can set it at six o'clock, and if we get too much issues, we can always move it to seven, but.
Okay, it sounds like a plan.
There's something that's, you know, public hearings, for instance, you know, we can always push them back if we wanted to, for that instance, you know, if there was something major going on.
Towards the end, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, we can do it towards the end instead of the beginning, or, you know, we can work with it, but I would propose we at least give it a whirl. A lot of townships now are not meeting this late.
It's an awful long day for you three.
This is an awful long day for us three.
Well, no, we start at seven in the morning.
Well, I know, but don't, sometimes you get, you know, if it works out, you can get an hour to yourself before meetings, but I don't know how that works out.
That's actually a little bit more difficult.
Yeah.
It's more difficult?
It is.
You go home for an hour, you definitely don't feel like coming back. I don't know, what do the department heads think?
I like it. I'm good with it.
Okay.
A lot of people are working from home now, so many of them will be able to get here, even if we move it up, I think. So many.
Because our normal hours were open till six, so. Okay, do we have any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Good. Okay, next we have, I tell you, we used to be at seven thirty, and that last half hour, oh my gosh.
Listen, I would like to say four thirty for the meetings, but I'll go six.
No. Alright, next we have resolution twenty twenty-one oh eight. Text amendments, basically it's approving the draft of a cannabis ordinance that was recommended by the planning commission and the county. This is an ordinance to restrict how, and where, and everything about growing medical marijuana. We can't tell people they can't do it because the state voted to allow them to do it. And we want to further restrict it. And that's what this ordinance does, planning commission and any zoning ordinance, planning commission comes up with it, hashes it over, does public hearings, and approves it, and then it goes to the St. Clair County, their planning commission, they approve it, and after that, it comes to us. And, and we can either approve it, or say, no, we don't like it, and send it back. Basically, this is restricting, I'll just do a few highlights. The amount of square footage that they can use to grow is fifteen percent of the floor area of the dwelling. They have to establish business hours when people can come, and, and the amount of trips is limited to it.
Five a week?
Five a week. The owner, or, or, or at the grow house, the owner has to own it and live there. It can't be a house or a place they rented, and they're living someplace else. No production requiring the extraction of THC is permitted there, as Mr. O'Reagan brought up, as they use propane to do that, and there's lots of explosions, and lots of, lots of issues that go along with that.
Odor.
Yep, we, we restrict the odor, how they have to take care of the odor, all the plants have to be in a secure, enclosed, locked facility. Let me see, I'm just hitting lighting. If they use lighting at night, it's all have to be shielded, so no light shining on to your, onto the neighbors.
Between the hours of eleven P and six A.
Eleven P and six A, that's when they can turn the lights on. Yep. Oh, they have to have all the required electrical plumbing and mechanical permits, okay. Right, they have to control the odor, not limited to, but for activated carbon filters, scrubbers, internal exhaust fans, odor neutralizers, and purification systems. And there's a few other things in there. The only thing I was disappointed in it, but I'm gonna recommend we pass it anyhow, because if something's better than nothing, is there was no restriction on the amperage of services, power. And Gary, you could back us up on that, DTE, they, they talked to us about, you know, these houses, they want an awful lot of, you know, they want up their service to a lot of power. And, and that can be a fire hazard, electrical issue, and DTE, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, cannot say no unless we have an ordinance that says, you know what, to go over, say, like, two hundred amps, you have to get the okay from the township.
Well, if they're gonna upgrade the electrical, they need a permit anyways.
Yep, right.
Yeah, it says.
Gary, could you, could you come up here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Four Jake.
What we'd like to do is to do just that, and regulate the amount of power that we can put to a residential property. Right now, it's maybe six hundred, and we want to get it back down to the two hundred, and that way, anything more than two hundred, they may still be able to get, but they have to go through special approvals to do it, they just can't do it. DTE can't stop it if they do, when we don't have an ordinance that regulates it, you know, they could be sued for that, so they do right now let us know when, when excessive power is being asked for, but it would be a great thing if this board could do something in that regard to give us a little more ammunition.
We could do that separate ordinance, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll get the ball rolling on it.
Yeah, that wouldn't affect commercial or?
No, just residential.
Just residential.
And, and there's no need in residential to supply more than two hundred, unless you have something like this going on.
You're talking about two hundred amp service, which will provide you two twenty in a home.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary. Other than that, you like what you see in this?
I, I do. I, I look at it as, not as restricting, but regulating.
Right.
Regulating it out there, and, and one thing to point out is that we're talking about residential districts where we're turning into more of a home occupation, and going up underneath that ordinance, kind of piggybacking on that, and that's where the restriction comes into place, where it's fifteen percent of the floor space, and that has to be done inside the house, can't be in a breezeway, garage, detached garage, pole barn, it's gotta be inside the house. And that's to really regulate that use. In the ordinance still allows for them to do the full caregiver in an industrial district, where they can have the five patients in themselves, and seventy-two plants, and all that can be done in an industrial atmosphere, instead of in the residential atmosphere, where, you know, we have people who are living right next door, and have to smell the odors, and.
Yeah, hear the fans, and.
Yep, so it's, it's a good thing.
And this will become, if we approve it, this will become effective thirty days after publication, so we're looking at June fourth. Any more questions for Gary?
Thanks, Gary.
Mm-hmm.
Good job.
You. I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the draft cannabis ordinance recommended by the planning commission, documented by resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero eight, zoning text amendments, one two six dash four one, M M M A caregiver.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion?
I think it's got enough teeth in it. I really do, it's, it's large, it's encompassing, it's thorough, there's a lot of thought that went into this one.
Yep.
And, yeah, I, I think it, it gives us more opportunity to review, to know what's going on in our community, to set some guidelines, and really some safety concerns.
It has safety concerns.
That's really what it's about. Keep in mind, we've had public hearings on this already, so, you know, in order to develop this, we're good. Okay, well, I just, I think it's, I'm tipping my cap to you, and the planning commission, Mark, I think it's a very thorough document.
Alright, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have project control, DPW saw grant update, I see Anthony back there. Boy, look at that mask you're sporting.
Yeah. Don't talk with it, so. So anyway, we are putting in for our fourth draw request, and so that allows us to give a summary to the state, and then I'll read that summary to you, and, and give you an idea where we are in each category, so. In the inventory of the system, so when we went out to inventory all the sanitary manholes and structures, all adjacent nearby water structures and systems, we surveyed those as well, so that's a lot of survey data, and so we're one hundred percent complete with that now.
I'm gonna back up, this, just for you and I, we know what we're talking about, just.
Yeah.
We received, it's called a saw grant from the state of Michigan, stormwater, asset water.
Yeah.
Wastewater.
Stormwater and asset management and wastewater grant, yeah.
And wastewater grant, it was a little over a million dollars, and it will check our whole system out, and and just make sure we're doing everything right, and we hired, hired project control to help us with that.
Yeah, and I can give you a little bit of an idea how that works in a timeline, so in the adjacent communities that are a few years ahead of us, like Ira was starting, started theirs in twenty fifteen, versus Clay, we're starting ours in twenty twenty. New Baltimore was in twenty eighteen, so like right now, New Baltimore is looking at all the product of the saw grant, because it's complete, is informing their loan program, so they just found out during the process of the saw grant that they needed about, you know, several million dollars worth of upgrades to their system, they knew they needed to do something, especially along the waterfront, and so, so they're at that point now, well, all that information that we got paid by the state to gather was now used to, to generate that, that loan requirement. The other thing is, is it allowed them to determine that their rate structure was appropriate, and that they, that they would have enough money to be in a good position, not having major shocks to the end users, and increasing rate hikes and things like that, so the saw grant allows you to, to determine exactly what it is the sanitary system needs, down to the minute detail, and then assign a, a cash value to that amount, and a timeline in which those things need to be done. You know, lifespan for those assets, and then that gets put into our financial model, which is a part of what I want to talk to you about tonight, and then that projects out, and relates it to the rates and revenues that are being brought in. So inventory is kind of like the first step, and that's why we're, we're completed with it. We're approximately sixteen or seventeen months in, so of a three-year grant, so we still have, you know, halfway to go, a little over halfway to go. We're at about sixty percent of the, the budget has been, has been spent, and we have a remaining forty percent, so a little over four hundred thousand left in the, in the budget. We've, with that, we've done that, and we've also done a condition assessment of all, well, eleven of the sanitary structures as of March thirty-first, but we did Greenwood pump station since then, so we only have one left, which is Blue Bill. And with those stations, we, we put in a 3D scanner, and we laser scanned the inside of those underground structures, so that we don't have to enter them, and then that laser scanning data gets reviewed in the office by our inspectors, and then we determine all the different cracks, or defects, or problems that need to be addressed, and put it, like, again, a monetary value to those repairs. If it is a certain far gone, then it could even be needing lining, so. So those will be the things that we'll be doing in the summer, is assigning all those defect codes to all our structures. With metering and modeling, so another aspect is to determine how much illicit flows are coming into the system from flooding, from, you know, rain.
Infiltration.
Infiltration, you know, groundwater infiltration into the system, and all that costs the township money, because we have to pay for the wastewater treatment plant to treat it. So on top of that, we have thirteen pump stations, each one of them doing a pump cycle and, and drawing electricity, and that can be a substantial amount of money. By figuring out how much we have that shouldn't be there, we can then determine how much we can achieve in reduction, and that has some grant opportunities in the future, after we're finished with the grant, that will help us pay for some of the rehabilitation. They'll convert some of the potential loan, if we needed one, we determined we need one, they could convert that into a grant. So that's a subsequent project that would be through the state revolving fund, and that's, this is all kind of, you know, the forerunner to that. So we have eight months of meter data, and, or seven months, eight months now, and so we'll continue on till we have a full year of, of flow data, but we've, we've covered a period where we normally expect to find a high rain event, and then we kind of use that to characterize the system, because you'll see it in every single monitoring point, you'll see that rain event, and so that gives us a good idea of a certain type of flow, inflow, right, from the surface. So that's what we're doing now, we're, we're going through all that data, characterizing our rain events. Then the GIS software, so GIS is a stepping stone to the asset management program, so GIS gives a geographic map of all the assets, and allows us to take that map and put it into a database, so that we can assign to each one of those assets more information, such as an inspection report, or photos, or a maintenance report. Any, any type of data we want to, you know, associate with it, we can do it through the software we purchased, called Silversmith. So GIS is what they take to build our, our software model, and then we have to do the data input to bring all our information into those points, and the DPW's been helping us do that internally, using some interns and things, we've been able to have that work and coordination to get all that data, as much as we can into the system, so that it's a built-out model. We just completed the water system, and so Silversmith is right now adding the water system to the sanitary system, so we'll be able to do similar, you know, data input to, to that system. Water system, you know, all water valves, all hydrants, all main valves, curb stops, everything. All the, even, even all in Harson's Island, has all been surveyed, and, and is being built in the asset management tool. Big part of the, the budget is spent in cleaning and televising, it's just a, it's a costly endeavor, but you know, we gain something out of that tangible, because, you know, a lot of our sanitary lines have never been cleaned, so we clean them in order to televise them, thereby. So we clean them in order to televise them, thereby, um, we're getting something, you know, physical, a physical advantage out of that as well. And so we've cleaned and televised a hundred and ten thousand two hundred linear feet as of now, um, in the township. So, uh, we're probably pushing ninety percent at this point. We still have the waterfront because we require, uh, specialized, um, equipment for easements along between the seawall and people's homes. And so, um, that's the the next thing we'll do is is to complete that. That is an area that is, um, prone to having flooding and wave action issues. So, um, not so much wave action here, but flooding for sure. And then, um, the, uh, the trailer parks would be the last, uh, item, uh, those collection systems that are township township owned. Um, we'll do that at the very end. Um, they're small lines, but, um, they're all running under the trailers, and, um, so we want to make sure we get some of the main co- uh, collector, uh, trunks done first. Um, then, uh, finally is the, uh, the rate study. So, um, the rate study in the rate structure software, um, is something that we did a, um, demonstration with from Waterworth or Muniworth, they're calling themselves. Um, and Waterworth is, uh, is a cash model, a financial model. So, um, it basically will take the the sewer fund or the water fund, and it will determine the revenues, the capital expenses, the operating expenses, any debt that that fund has, and then it will project it over forty years, and it'll tell us exactly where we'll be at any point from now until then, um, with all those, with that, any projects or any, uh, projected expenditures in the model. And so we, in, uh, the two-hour onboarding, we devoted it entirely to the sewer fund, and we actually got that sewer fund pretty, pretty well calibrated with one, um, um, uh, what do you want to call it? The audit, one audit, financial statement that's been audited. Um, so we still will add another year or two prior to just calibrate it further. Um, but I think it gave us a very good idea of where we stand, and then with the the status quo and then any potential, um, you know, loan or or any kind of investment, it will allow us to determine where we'll be, um, with what we're bringing in. So, um, so I think that, um, that's a pretty good tool, a pretty, um, useful tool. Uh, it it allows us to justify, for example, to Eagle, uh, any of our decisions that we make, that we're not, you know, that we're not going to be getting ourselves into into a major financial problem um, because, uh, they won't prioritize communities that do that unless there's other, you know, ways for them to to move Eagle's hand. But for us, normal communities, uh, we need to show that we're like, like you described before, that we're responsible with, uh, the funds and, um, that they're going to be well spent on us. So, um, so that's what the software really does. So it's, it's a really valuable tool. Um, it comes in, uh, modules based on the fund, and, uh, so the sewer fund is a module, and then the water fund would be a separate module. And that's pretty, pretty much what we have here. If you have roads and things, that's why they call it Muniworth because then you'd have other municipal utilities. Uh, but for us, it's the sewer and water. Um, that's the most important. Um, so that's what the, um, I believe that got on the agenda, the, um, the quote. And so I I kind of indicated which parts of the quote would be, um, covered by the Saw Grant. We waited until now because we wanted to see where we would come in with, um, other grants that we've put out for. Um, we're kind of lower on that, and I can, I can give an update on that, um, afterwards. But, um, but this would be, um, allowing us to, because we have a ninety-day trial period right now, so that'd allow us to convert that into a subscription. And then obviously, the first thing I do is that I put our subscription into our operating expenses in the model to make sure that we'll have enough, and that's not going to impact us. These small amounts never have a major impact, um, on the models. So, um, that way, we're pretty much don't have to to worry about it again. And it'll give us that, um, that tool to work with, to do meetings and and committee and and, uh, run scenarios. Um, and then, you know, the, we can clone those models, and any one of us here can can have access to then do the, run a scenario if you want and check that out. And, uh, you're not worried about, you know, messing up the, uh, the models that we're using to to advise the budget. So, uh, that's pretty much it. Um, do any questions on, uh, any of those things?
Um, have you, have you been doing any work with O H M? I mean, they, they've done some of this stuff already on our interceptor. I mean, I mean, I
Not really, no. Um, I've spoken with the engineer there. Um, but, uh, but I I think that, um, they may have done engineers' cost estimates for the for the interceptor.
Yeah.
And
As far as inspection, though.
Yeah, they've done C C, CCTVing, uh, some inspection work. Um,
I mean, you're, you're checking more than just the interceptors.
Yeah, yeah, and we're kind of, so that is kind of a, a cost, and we have that built into this model.
Right.
So, so the cost for engineering for the interceptor, the cost for potentially that project, we're, we've already, uh, looked at that in the model.
Right.
Um, but as per like the details of the the defects in the interceptor and and the cost to repair it, that's kind of entirely their their scope of work. So
Exactly.
Yeah, I've looked at their things. I've, I've reviewed all the documents they sent us.
Uh-huh.
Um, and, um, and so right now, we're just, um, we're going to definitely see, uh, how that impacts the the rate structure for the township. Um, but yeah, the, uh, they, they reached out a few times, but I think, uh, we just have to let them kind of conclude their study.
Any questions for Anthony?
John, I assume that you're fairly with this, uh, process? And you've been, uh, you've been reviewing it right along?
Oh, yes.
And you're in, uh,
We were, we were daily hand in hand.
You're in the same page?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're running that Silversmith now, right?
Not yet.
Yes.
Well, Silversmith, we are.
Yes.
We're running it Silversmith.
Yep.
So when you send down, uh, a scan into the one, one of the pump stations, does that data make its way to the Silversmith program?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we can open up one of the thirteen pump stations and physically see the inside, what it looks like?
Yep. Now, uh,
That, that kind of information is is going, because that information technically belongs to Clay Township, right?
Correct.
You're facilitating the process.
Yep.
But we're trying to gather it and also incorporate it into the Silversmith.
Yep, yep. And, um, some of the, there's some plugins if you actually wanted to zoom into the, uh, pump station and see it, there's a plugin for your browser. But but other than that, all the data is there, the raw data. Um, inspection reports are PDFs, so they're, you know, they can be shared widely. Um, and then all the, uh, the scan is just a thous- thousands of pictures that are all put together. And those are JPEGs, which are just standard, uh, picture data, and that's all saved there. So
Saved inside the Silversmith program?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure there, those two are shaking hands. It sounds like a lot of good information.
Yep.
We don't want to do that twice.
Yeah, and and then it's in one place, which is good, too.
Yeah, you bet. Um, how about, um, violators? So is this, is this assisting us in flow rates and in understanding where some of our violations still may exist?
Right, so, um, as in, uh, maybe some illicit flows into the sanitary system?
Yeah, because it was a concern of ours, right? Especially when we had high water, it was, it was a real concern. It's because we have to treat all that.
Right.
Right? And if we're, if somebody's, uh, downspouts and or sumps are going right into our our sanitary lines, it's a problem.
Right. So, um, we monitor all flows. So we know everything that is going through the system from Ira all the way to the wastewater treatment plant.
We've put in, what, eight valves, was it?
Eight locations and
Eight locations. Remember, we could lease them or buy them.
Yep.
And we bought them.
Yep.
And this will, will, will
It's forever.
We'll do a lot for monitoring that.
Okay.
And I know the water department, they, we, we know the areas, and, uh, they, they'll go in with a camera themselves and
So how we do, and this is the study, part of the study we're actively doing now, is, uh, we know the actual flows, and we know what the flows are supposed to be because we know how many residents there are, and we know roughly how much water they use. Well, we know actually e- exactly how much water they use. And so we can say, okay, this is how much water they're using. This is, uh, there's some, you know, industry standard percentages that it could be more or less than. And then anything over that is
Should trip a flag somewhere, right?
Yeah, it can be, um, something coming in from the groundwater. It can be something coming in from above through, you know, a manhole or through, uh, manholes and and, uh, vertical structures, uh, or it can be from subpumps. And so we were able to whittle it down to, this is how much is is that, and this is how much is subpumps because we've inspected all the lines. So we know where everything's coming from that's not subpumps. And so like that, we're able to say, okay, this is how much we expect to reduce by doing repairs. And so that leaves just the subpump users. So at that point, you'd be able to say, well, you know, you all, you all have some options on the table, such as, maybe they don't have any other option where to send it, and so everybody will pay for it and show that they can get off. You know, if they're not hooked up, they can show that they're not, not hooked up, and they can come off of, let's say, a, a treatment fee, you know? And that's other communities have done that. Everybody will come up with their own good way. Um, all we can do is then establish what flows are coming from where and in what regions. Because we have six stations, and so we have the two ends, and then we have six locations in between where we've cut up the the township into different regions that are service regions. And so we can say, you know, this service region has a lot, this service region doesn't have as many, uh, it's more, let's say, an I N I issue that is our, is our responsibility. Um, and then when we get into, um, the, you know, repair situation, uh, we always want to see about having a clean out on the public side so that inspections can be done of that lateral, because that will allow us to work with, a lot of times, it might not be there. They might not know, you know, that their whole yard is draining into the sanitary system because there's problems with their laterals. And so that will allow us to, the, the, the state will actually pay for, for us to do those inspections of laterals, um, in another program, the lateral condition assessment program. And then that will give us, um, ability to show that and share that with the, with the homeowners so we can work with them because that's their property.
Yep.
A lot of technology.
Yep.
Any other questions for Anthony?
Great, thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have, uh, D P W Waterworth Software. Um, actually, Chrissy and I did a, a presentation on it, and, uh, it was pretty cool, wasn't it?
It was very cool.
This is a subs- a yearly subscription, isn't it?
Yes.
We wouldn't necessarily
This is for both the water and the sewer?
Right.
The grant's covering, uh, the majority of the sewer.
Right. How many years is this for? See, I guess I should
One.
Yeah. I mean, once we, we get all the information and study and everything, do we need to have it every year? Or, I mean, because usually we do a rate study every three or five years. I don't know. What do you think?
I guess it depends, once we start using it, how much information we're getting out of it, if we want to continue. And I was on that call also, by the way.
Yeah, we can look at it, so.
But I think that right now it's important to go with our, our grant and everything we have.
Well, to have our auditors do a rate study, it's a lot more money, let's put it that way. And this is pretty slick, I I have to admit.
Yeah, I felt like once I got back in, once I saw them using it, and I got back in, it was much easier for me to add the data, and it's amazing, because you're adding it, it's calculating charts and graphs, and I just think that's, I mean
I mean, gives instantaneous answers and, uh,
You can run separate modules, and then, you know, like interceptor issue, they, they have a regular module, and then they have like a, what's it called? Adding another mod, adding, uh, interceptor scenario.
Yeah, different scenarios.
And then it would show what happened to your cash when, when that happened. It was held by, we just worked on capital improvement plan, so we had all of John's information to add in, and so, you know, that's, uh, fifteen years out.
Right.
For that cash, so.
That's what, it goes, what, fifteen or twenty years out?
Well, we have the capital improvement plan for
For fifteen.
Fifteen years out. So, you know, we have to add more to the plan to fully utilize the module.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, to approve the Waterworth software wastewater module and water module, um, two thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars township portion and four thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars Saw Grant portion.
Okay, we have a motion. Any support?
I'll support it.
Any more discussion? I think it's money will, I mean, I can't remember what our auditors charged us for the last, just water study, but it was water and sewer. But, uh, I think it was around ten grand, so.
So, the next time we're audited, providing we're still using this Waterworth, we can forego that?
Well,
That was a separate thing that we had them do.
Yeah, that was a separate thing. We, you know, every, you know, we put a plan together, okay, you know, how, how, what should we be doing with our water rates and our sewer rates and everything? And, uh, fortunately, our water, we actually, I always say, frozen our water rates, and they haven't moved for the last three, four years. But our sewer rates, we're, we're still in trouble there, and we've been going up five percent per year on our sewer part of it. But the water, we, we look pretty good, and we haven't touched those rates on anything for a considerable amount of time, so.
And I think part of the problem that we discussed is that previous administrations did away with the sewer improvement charge.
Right.
So we have not been collecting funds for when we have major upgrades that need to be done to the sewer. So that's the situation at the moment.
Yep.
It's, you know, we're looking at about three and a half million dollar bill shared with Ira, but, uh, we've been working on getting federal and, uh, state and county monies to pay for it, too. So.
This will also, I think, allow us, once we start adding data on the, well, I started adding data on the water side, but once we have a scope of work for the M twenty-nine water line, we'll be able to plug that in there and make sure that we're, you know, if we need to get a head start on doing something for that.
Very good. Any, uh, questions or more discussion on this? Very none. We can, it's not a, we can do, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, uh, John, we have a booster, uh, uh, station inspection, right? Proposal is with Dixon.
So we're due for our five-year inspection on our interior coat, um, and our booster station on Muscat Run. It's a water ground storage tank. Um, so Dixon has been handling this for longer than I've been around when it comes to our booster tank. And, um, they have a proposal to come in and do a, um, remote, uh, robotic inspection where we don't have to shut the tank down. Um, it actually saves us money to do it that way.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. So I'm asking for the board to authorize that inspection. This is also an Eagle requirement that we do this every five years.
Eagle?
Yes.
So on the data that they, uh, get, they'll go to Eagle?
Yes.
Or is the inspection report?
Yes. In fact, I'm meeting with him tomorrow. Um, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, Will Disser from Eagle, and this is one of the things he wants to see, so.
Uh, pending inspect, uh, discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the water booster station inspection for thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, line item five nine one dash nine three eight, inspection services proposal.
This is a good deal. I mean, it used to be, what, eight, nine grand?
I think our last one was six thousand.
Was it for, for
Yeah.
That, and we have to take it out of service.
Well, uh, one thing that's going to save us some money is I talked to, uh, Tom Rounds at Dixon.
Yep.
They are going to coordinate with They are going to coordinate with, uh, Port Huron Township, so it's going to cut our mobilization fees in half.
Oh, okay.
They're going to do it on the same day, so.
Cool. And their preferred supplier?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Are the tanks supposed to be emptied, though? I mean, I don't know. I know regular water tanks are supposed to be emptied, and I thought, even the large ones, they don't have to be emptied.
No, no, no requirement to do that. We'll, we'll, they'll do a robotic inspection, and we'll, we'll sample it and put it back in service.
Great.
Yes.
I didn't know if that was part of the maintenance, so.
I'd like it. Any other questions for John? Okay, all in favor of, uh, hiring Dixon for thirty-five hundred dollars for the tank inspection? That's the motion, right? We have support?
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we had, uh, emergency pump repair. For forty-eight hundred dollars.
So we had a pump fill on our Greenwood, uh, lift station. Um, it was just a matter of some bearing seals and some machining on the shaft. So instead of purchasing a new pump, we sent it out, and he had it back to us in forty-eight hours for about half the price.
Nice.
Cost savings.
Yes.
Perfect. Board, I'll make a motion. Under warranty or?
One year warranty.
One year, okay.
Good job, John.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to approve the HP Electric Motor Company invoice in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for the repair of our pump.
Support.
Motion support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Next we have board member comments, Cindy Valentine.
Um, I would just like to say congratulations to EMT Evan Randall, and I expect to see that certification as soon as he gets it in his hot little hands.
Very good, Joanne.
Uh, well, I'm just real happy to see the, uh, fire department particularly on the, for the whole Clay Township, but on the island, making some fabulous steps forward to straighten that place up that's been left out for so many years. Got some good help, and it's doing a good job. Because the more it sits, the worse, the worst it's going to cost us. And so, glad, congratulations, and keep up the good work.
Mr. O'Regan.
Yeah, my thanks to Anthony, John Gary, Chief Rose. Um, you guys always come in with knowledge and not shy about educating the board on really important decisions. And, and really, as professionals, we look for your guidance. So I just applaud the effort, and thank you for coming in. May the fourth be with you.
Oh, God. Chrissy?
Um, I just want to say, it seems like we've had an uptick. I don't know if it's because we're talking about the M-29 again, but we've had an uptick in people calling and asking where they can dispose of, like, medical waste, like, um-
Fire department.
Um, we've had them calling about- Yeah, that, we've had them calling about oil, fertilizer, that kind of thing. Someone came by today and asked about asbestos. So I think probably the best thing is if they have a question to call the fire department, um, to ask if they can dispose of that kind of stuff there.
Yeah, we have a haz, hazmat dumping place. It's the only one in South St. Clair County, behind our, our fire station. Call the fire department, make an appointment beforehand.
And then also I would say, unwanted medications-
Yep.
Should not be flushed. They, uh, can be put in a Ziploc bag and brought to the police department and dropped off.
Yep, unwanted prescriptions, I'm repeating in case they don't hear you.
Yep, yep.
We take to the dispatch, take them out of the bottle. We don't need to see what's in them or who they're, they're to. Take them out of the bottle, throw them in a, a Ziploc bag, and drop them off in our dispatch.
Can't we do that over at the fire department also?
Yes. Yeah, or in the fire department, we properly dispose them. Uh, you don't want all that going into our, uh, our groundwater. So, yeah, it's springtime. Spring cleaning. So that's a good thing. All right, hey, Mark?
Yeah, congratulations to, uh, Evan Randall on that, uh, EMT. Um, happy to see the fire trucks coming online. Um, a lot of good stuff going on, according to the supervisory report. There's a lot of, there's a walleye tournament by the Lions, May sixteenth. Uh, you can sign up for that, uh, big prize money. Uh, I got some new business I'd like to entertain right now concerning contractors. Uh, and that's when we award contracts. I like to have something over fifty thousand dollars that we do in due diligence on every contractor that we're going to award a contract to potentially. Uh, at least get three bids. Uh, I've been talking to John about this. Uh, fifty thousand dollars, we need three, over fifty thousand dollars. We should have three bids. Uh, and also have a preferred supplier, such as Dixon was a preferred supplier. Uh, you know, Dunn and Brandt Seed of Republic, Alara, we can investigate through Michigan, and find out exactly where these contracts are coming from, and make sure that we're hiring somebody that isn't going to sham us or, or, or commit fraud, whatever the case may be, however you want to put it. Uh, so that's where I'd like to, like to go with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I'm all for that. I'm just, you know, so impressed with the department heads and all the money you seem to be saving us and bringing in so many good things and taking care of the people and, um, reminding everybody about this Saturday is our St. John's Marsh cleanup, right?
Eight AM.
May eighth. Um, so great job on, on all that stuff, and happy Mother's Day. Take care of your moms. That's about it.
That's right.
It's Sunday. Oh, oh, one more thing, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Wanted to thank Christie and Cindy and you for bringing me up. I couldn't make the budget workshop due to just some doctor's issues, but I'm all on the mend, and thank you for taking time out of your day, because that's a couple hours you'll never get back and walking me through the budget. Appreciate that.
Yeah, we're getting there. So, yeah, congratulations to Evan, who's a great kid, and I'm glad to see him doing successful things in successful ways. Um, we just got a lot of really positive stuff going on. It's, and, and a lot coming, you know? Uh, music in the parks, uh, got that going on. A lot of improvements at Pearl Beach Pier. Uh, you know, I'm working with this No Limits charter. Uh, it's, it's been, it's been great. Uh, you know, DDA's spending some money down there, too, and, uh, uh, I see it everywhere, you know, that-
Little pantry.
Uh, yeah, the, the little pantry. In fact, uh, Wednesday, I'm going to see if, uh, I got some people that want to do the same thing on the island. I'm going to see if Proms Field will put one up there. And, uh, I'll get a cost from, uh, Kathy's father, see if he wants to build another one.
He might.
He will, yeah. And, um, just lots of, you know, the Harson's Island Nature Park, we get that ball rolling. Um, just, it's just a lot of cool stuff, you know, new fire trucks.
Woo!
That's a big one.